Seven o'clock in the evening. First up on our lovely and varied and exciting agenda this evening. First up is a federal COVID relief funding update. And I will let our town administrator, Mr. Don Lo kick things off. Mr. Lo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The timing seemed right to do an update on on what we've done with our CARES Act money. And then later on in this conversation, we'll get into proposed plans at a high level for the ARPA money. But first, our CARES Act allocation was $473,990. To date, we have received reimbursements for $403,989.88. And we are awaiting another 73,000, I'm sorry, $70,000. So put simply, we found very good uses for all of our CARES Act money. I think we might see there's a balance perhaps of around $1,995.97 to be exact that we haven't offended yet. But we'll find a use for that too, I'm sure. There's been no lack of things to target. Much of this, as I said in the email, were spent on capital, PPE, and cleaning. I think were the, you know, the three largest categories. Things as basic as the plexiglass you see in the town hall and the signage, all the way up to pretty intense cleaning that we've had done in the buildings. Capital, the big, single biggest expense in capital was the $122,000 that the fire chief got approval for for the fly car, the second fly car for the ALS program. We did, you know, we've done this double check in my list for things for the election. As far as the new voting machines or the clickers, I should say, for town meeting that was paid for out of that. Make sure all the employers were set up for teleworking appropriately. So we have full capabilities remotely for the employers working from home if we need to. We made money available to the school district to help with the air balancing. You know, the improvement of ventilation and air quality there. And one other thing, the fire chief also got approval for $50,000 for power stretchers.
Are we being bombed?
Jenny, can we mute that? $50,000 for power stretchers for the ambulance.
Can you get rid of that person, Jenny?
Oh, that's Omid. He's on advisory. Okay, great. So so, you know, it, it sounds like a lot of money. It is a lot of money. But what I've learned is in a pandemic, money can go very quickly. And we need to be smart in how we spend the money, which I believe we were. We worked very closely as a, as a team to set priorities. And certainly my priority was always the safety of the employees and the safety of the public. Based on what we knew, based on what we knew of the pandemic at the time, based on what we knew of the rules at the time. And, and I, I will say that I think we all collectively did a, did a good job as a team to establish good, solid priorities. And I think the, the proof is in the results that we were able to keep the building open, the buildings open quite a bit. Certainly more than a lot of towns. And I think we were very successful in what we did, quite honestly.
Yeah, that was great. It was great, Don. You all did a great job.
Don, how much did the voting machines cost?
$9,000.
Okay.
That's not too bad.
No, not that. It was certainly less than I thought it was going to be.
Yep. All right, I guess next up is, in this grouping is a request from the town accountant to accept the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds in the amount of $1,621,868.
This is, this is a federal requirement. It's a technicality, but the, the select board needs to officially accept the funds.
Is there a presentation on this? Or do you want to go right to a vote or discussion or?
There is no presentation on it. I didn't anticipate anybody not voting for the funds.
Show us the money.
In that case, I move that the Bolton, Town of Bolton, accepts the ARPA money in a total of $1,621,868.
Second, all those who favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Sorry. Roll call, Sakansky.
Aye.
Keep.
Aye.
Waisaki.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great.
And then finally, you know, we, we've had a couple of, I would say, very intense, very productive team meetings here to talk about, again, at a high level, at a category type level, what we can, can and should be using our ARPA money for. $1.6 million is a lot of money. And I'm not looking, actually, I, I am looking for approval on a couple of things tonight. Because, as I referenced in the email I sent you, because I think it makes sense. But just to walk through the list that I gave you. And I, I should say, the, the, the team meetings that we've had have been with Nanatska, our accountant, Krista Noel, our treasurer, Randy, our DPW director, his assistant, Leslie, Jenny's been in all the meetings. Brian Boyle, Chair of Advisory, has been in the meetings. Our fire chief has been in. Because we, we needed to talk about capital, both short term and long term. Because we, we do have, as I've said, we've had some issues relative to unforeseen spending on our buildings. And what if anything might be appropriate to use out of ARPA money for that? Because we are in a pandemic and still. And so, for example, we foresee between, between spending that we've already done and projected spending, we're looking at about $147,000 for the public safety building. And without getting into all the detail now, because it's still evolving, that, that, some of that is a projection, some of that is actual. The most significant thing right now for the public safety building is the motor and the generator had major issues. So that took the generator offline. We can't be without a generator for, at a public safety building, especially in a pandemic, because we can't, we can't provide essential services if we go down. So we had to rent a generator. And that cost about $30,000. And to repair the generator costs a little over $10,000. And we've got other projected expenses as well relative to site issues relative to one of our holding tanks underground having issues. And then perhaps having to go back in and re-dig that up again for another reason. So in short, in short term, we've, we've already had an impact to the building's budget because of that. And similar, in that same vein, relative to the library. As I believe you all know, we've got issues there. We had issues with the well. The, the wellhead had to be replaced there. So we, well, it's a, it's a difficult, it's difficult to access, access that. And the public safety building wellhead was right next to it. So we figured, you know, one goes and the other one goes shortly thereafter. So we replaced both at the same time while we're in there. So we've got about $30,000 worth of, of expense relative to the library already. So, again, not looking for an official vote tonight to approve some of this stuff. I think at the next meeting, I'll be looking for that. But one of our focuses was we needed to determine what spending we felt was appropriate to be able to charge against ARPA funds to offset some of the strain that we've experienced on the, on the building's budget. So that's, so again, at a high level, talking about categories, these are categories of work that I would like to make the selectmen comfortable with, and then get into the detail for the next meeting as to why specifically we'll be asking for approval of certain amounts. So again, I'm, I try to keep this at a high level discussion right now. For the wastewater treatment improvements, we already, we, we had a study performed which projected out five years about $255,000 worth of work that will need to be done on the water treatment facility. And there'll be some, there may be some more engineering that goes along with it. But right now, the, the projected figure that we have is $305,110. Again, not looking for approval tonight because I'm not looking to do that immediately. But water treatment i- is very much in the, in the regulations. They just, they just refer to it as public sewage, basically. Well, this is our public sewage. This is all we have. So it certainly qualifies, and we were all in agreement on that. And then two categories without any hard dollars at this point. As you know, we've discussed, and I've updated you on the issues with the mold that we had over Florence Sawyer and how we've dealt with that. Well, if we had, if we had a, a good air handling system in there with improved air quality, I think a MERV 13 capability, we can avoid this in the future. And certainly, the wording in the statute references air, improved air quality or circulation in a congregate setting. And they specifically reference schools. So this, this would be a fit. The $400,000 is a placeholder. That's not an engineering number. That's, that's really kind of dates back to an old figure from years ago. But it's as good a figure as we have. And we're, and I'm working with the school district to refine that. We've, we've, we've agreed to approve, we've, we've agreed to spend money on a study from our CARES Act money, actually, $40,000 for an engineering study. And Randy and I will be meeting with Superintendent Downing and the facilities manager next, Rob Friesworth, next Wednesday, I believe, we're meeting. So again, for the next selectmen's meeting, I think I'll have a pretty, well, I'll have a better update on that. And, and then finally, stormwater management. If you don't live in a small town or a medium sized town, you don't know about culverts. They talk about stormwater runoff and again, you know, public sewage and so forth, you know, storm drains to be able to handle that. But we certainly are in agreement that stormwater management in our town relates to culverts. And we're very comfortable saying that it would be an appropriate use of funds to pay for a culvert out of this. So what we'll be working on is determining what the recommendation is, is the, what the next priority culvert is. It's entirely possible it'll be the one on Fordish Mill Road. That with that, some staff, stopgap work was done on a couple of years ago. We were hopeful that it would pass muster with DEP and we wouldn't have to do a full replacement. Apparently, it doesn't pass muster and we're going to need to look at doing a full replacement. So I'm not telling you tonight that that is the culvert, but right now it's probably the most likely candidate. And that's where, that's where we came up with the $400,000, because we had a rough estimate before that it would be in the neighborhood of $400,000. So I, I don't know if, yes, Brian Boyle is here. I, I'd like to give him the opportunity to jump in since Brian was extremely helpful and very, very participatory in these meetings. And if he'd like to add anything or make any comments or observations, I would welcome them.
No, I mean, I think you pretty much covered the main categories of things that we're thinking about trying to deploy some of these funds for. I guess the only thing that I would add is that in our review of, well, I'll just back up and say it's a very interesting program because the relationship is directly between the municipality and the federal government. The state isn't sort of an intermediary. And so in reviewing the federal regulations, one of the things that came up was they do want the public to be involved and aware of how these funds are being spent. And so I think one of the reasons we wanted to come to this meeting to just present the initial plan was to get the public familiar with how this $1.6 million might be deployed. And then I think the goal is that as things become more concrete, we'll continue to share the information.
Exactly right. Exactly right.
Sounds good.
Do any, Mr. Chairman, do any members of the public want to speak on this?
I, I actually, I think it's a bit premature since we, we, this is, this is going to be discussed at a, at a future meeting in more detail. So I think this is more just to give everybody a heads up. I think once we have more concrete information, as Mr. Lo has indicated at a future meeting, that public input will be appropriated at that point in time.
And there also is, we have a, a long window to spend this money. So it, we aren't in an urgent rush, kind of like we were with the CARES Act money. We have until 2024 to commit the funds and then until 2026 to spend them. So this is nice that we have the time to actually plan over the next few years what we want to do.
Nanatska is very, very right. I, I've said consistently to the staff, not that they would, but I've emphasized, you know, this is, I, I don't want to approach this like we're going to spend this like drunken sailors because we have the money. We need to be very thoughtful about it and prioritize. But if there, if we do find something that is an immediate need, we shouldn't hesitate to act on that either. So again, we need to strike the right balance of, of, of not spending this too quickly because we don't know what awaits us. But if, if there is a really good opportunity, then we, we would be making recommendations to pursue it.
Right. And, and Mr. Lo, this is not something where we can just take the money and retire already, already existing debt. This, this, this really needs to be applied to specific projects.
Yes, it would be specific projects. There are criteria in the, oh, I don't know even know how many pages of regulations there are. It seems like thousands and it's not, but it's a pretty, pretty detailed. It's, they're lengthy. We're seeking clarification on a few things right now from the Treasury Department right now. So once we have that type of clarity, it will also be helpful because, like I said, we, we've spent a lot of times, time on this. We've become pretty proficient at it and there's still things that are confusing to us.
Okay. All right, great. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Lo and Mr. Boyle. Appreciate that. And we'll, we'll have more detail at a future meeting. All right. Well, next up is an update from the Master Planning Steering Committee. Mr. Boyle and Mr. Romer, come on down.
So we are here. Jenny, if you could put up the slides that Ryan sent you, that would be appreciated.
All right, give me just one minute.
As she puts them on, just a bit of background on where we are. This will help a great deal. As you know, we started off in November 2019. The primary effort was to get our heads together and figure out how to break down the development of the master plan and review of the existing master plan. So we broke out a number of task groups and the individual task groups collaboratively came up with individual task plans and came up with goals and scopes and what they needed to do in terms of gathering information and determining how they would bring it all together. Part of that was reviewing certainly the 2006 master plan, which I think everybody agrees was mightily successful. A number of the suggestions that were made in that task plan through the mitigation matrix were implemented. And the next step was to look at the future and see where we were going. But in order to see where we were going, as any good pathfinder does, you got to figure out where you are. So that, to a very large degree, has been our activity, frankly, for much of the last year. This little interruption by COVID-19 has been a bit challenging. But nonetheless, the individual groups have come together and through Zoom put together a great deal of information, some of which was readily available, much of which was not. Got into a great deal of detail, case in point, lots of discussion has gone on for a number of years about sewage treatment in some definition of town center, what the capability of the existing municipal plant was. That group, the water and sewer group, looked at that, also looked at things such as where the groundwater was in Bolton, where the aquifers are in Bolton, what well information reveals to us about where we stand with respect to water. An idea of where, and this is a reiteration of earlier themes, where a, multiple or individual public water supply would come from for Bolton, how big it might be, what it would serve, what is needed on an emergency basis, either for town drinking water or, or emergency water, either for emergency conditions townwide or more importantly, in the near term, for firewater. And coordinating with Jeff LaJonda and the, and the Fire Department. So that kind of information has been ongoing, but it's not been limited just to developing a baseline of information for Bolton. We've also gone out and looked at other towns, what other organizations within Bolton have done, surveys that have been done in the past, notably the last survey that was done for master planning. the last survey that was done for master planning, the EDC survey, and then we put together a survey that hopefully all of you have seen. Um, that brought us up to speed on a number of key issues in Bolton that was informed to some degree by the past plans, but a number of things that have been identified as um, key issues in the town and key issues that we need to think about in going forward with, um, overall town planning. So that's to a degree where we are. Um, we obviously need to know more about the end game. Um, and so what we've done and Brian's been key to this is put together a structure for the ultimate, um, master plan that will take into consideration the individual task group information, but I might state that it won't necessarily be structured by task group. It's going to be, I believe, a more holistic plan that looks at the key integration of the individual aspects of what's coming out of the task groups. Um, you know, case in point. Um, climate change mitigation, which, which a lot has been done already. Um, certainly Rebecca has done a lot of that with the conservation department. Um, she's done it with other towns, which is key to that kind of thing. And that will inform us in a number of other areas. Um, but that applies to frankly, virtually every other element of task plan development. Um, the key thing that's coming up in the near point, and I certainly hope everybody on this call and many others will, um, attend it, will be our first public outreach um, forum, which will occur at Florence Sawyer School on this Sunday from two to four. And I'll talk a little bit about that later. Um, where we intend to go with that is to um, get an informed position from the public on our goals and strategies. We've developed a number of goals, um, those individually with the task groups, but an overall set of goals for the overall plan. Um, those have identified a number of key issues. Um, case in point, economic development, housing, transportation, um, which will be further discussed in public forums. Not a lot of public forums, but key public forums that address a small number of key things that have been identified, um, in the forum that'll occur on Sunday as well as what we've gleaned from our information from our, um, our surveys as well as information that we're getting from other towns about what key regional aspects are important. And that's one of the things that we are looking at. We're coordinating cooperating with the Massachusetts Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. Um, and getting their input and consulting. We have a consulting agreement with them um, about what's going on around us and what their regional perspectives are. And they've just developed a regional plan, which will certainly inform us about what's going on outside of the boundaries of the town. And, um, how we can coordinate with other towns and look at what the impacts going both ways are. Um, so that will be an element as well. When we get the plan together, we're looking at, um, late next year. Um, we certainly will have public presentations of that and inevitably get feedback as a result of public presentations. Um, we would expect a substantial amount of feedback. Um, because we're looking at, um, more detail. Um, one thing that Brian reminded me today about was that we are our whole overall timeline is going to be informed to a certain degree about what goes on with the district and the high school. So that's a bit of a proviso there. Um, that may have some implication to the overall plan. Jenny, if you move forward. Um, just as an indication of what we're looking at, um, these are the individual activities, the individual task plans that we're looking at. And as you can see, I won't go into detail, but, um, it's a pretty wide range of issues. Again, uh, these will be broken out into chapters. Um, they will certainly be focused on in individual elements as planned, but, um, they're um, highly interactive and that will be considered. Jenny, if you want to go on. Um, the public forum, which I mentioned is going to occur on Sunday and two to four in Florence Sawyer. Again, we look forward to seeing everybody who can possibly make it to join us there. Um, look briefly at the agenda for that, the way it's going to be laid out. Jenny, if you move that up. Um, the way it's going to be organized is to have, um, basically an initial relatively brief presentation for a half hour. Looking at what the goals are, um, where we stand with respect to updating 2006 master plan. And I might add that this is not simply an update to add additional items um, to the implementation matrix, but stepping back and taking a look in a fair amount of detail of where we are, and that will inform us on where we go. Um, so that'll be the existing conditions, which will be a significant portion of that vision statement. And then I think perhaps the most important part is an hour of interactive stations. Those are going to be stations around the cafeteria of Florence Sawyer in which people will be able to move around and there'll be facilitated stations on individual focus issues where we can get feedback and um, illicit engagement from people about their thoughts, um, both thoughts on um, the particular issues, what's been found and their thoughts about going forward, their opinions. And then a half hour at the end, um, of a debrief from those interactive station facilitators, um, a couple of minutes apiece. And where we're looking at for next steps and we'll have a representative from M A P C involved in that process.
Right.
So, um, the interactive stations, Jenny, if you can move that down, um, are the ones you see before us, um, trying to get a handle on, um, assessment of community aspirations. We've laid out initial ones, a wish poem, which, um, basically is a series of what I would like to see about Bolton. Um, a SWOT analysis of what, um, the advantages and threats opportunities are, um, in Bolton and how we ought to address that. Significant issues with transportation and mobility, economic development, um, which is from my perspective is somewhat behind. Um, we're looking at that in more detail now, and I might add that we may be looking for money perhaps through grants, but perhaps from the town to get some consulting on that, although what has been done with the lower village and so um, anybody's interested, we can get that report to them, but I found it to be an excellent um, even handed report about the current situations and suggestions coming out of that. Housing, um, certainly giving more visibility to the HPP and other aspects of housing, open space and recreation, um, of which we have a great deal, but I think there um, a lot of thoughts about how to improve that in both areas. Um, and then the broader regional perspective in terms of the other towns around us. So that's where we are. That's where we're going.
And I, I know we're almost at maybe overtime, but I just wanted to throw in one word of thanks, um, to our prior town planner, Erica Yuriardi, who was with us for a lot of this journey and did a tremendous amount of work. And now of course, our new town planner Valerie Ortiz, who probably had no idea what she was getting herself into when she, uh, took this job, but she, I mean, she, I just have to say she's really been outstanding on this effort in particular because it's, it's not easy to steer a ship of like 12 volunteers working on 12 different subject matters. So I just wanted to extend that appreciation to her on behalf of the whole committee.
Here, here. And Valerie has done a terrific job and an tremendous amount of leadership, but also real hands-on, um, helping to steer the ship and in a couple of minor, but significant little storms.
Great. No, thank you. It all, it all sounds really good. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
No, thank you for your efforts. Great.
No, it looks good.
I, uh, I have a question. Is, is it your vision for the master plan that it will provide? I understand it'll provide a, a list or an outline of aspirations, but will it provide, uh, some kind of roadmap as to how to achieve those aspirations?
Absolutely. Without question.
Excellent. Good.
My background is project management. You can't manage a project without having specific actions.
Okay. Right. Well, thank you, Bob. Thank you, Brian. We appreciate that. Thank you for your, your dedication and hard work and we look forward to getting updates. So, uh,
Thank you. It was great to provide it.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Okay. Well, great. Next on our agenda is a request from the historical commission to accept two small bronze plaques to be displayed upon a short granite post at West Cemetery and South Cemetery. Martha Remington, are you with us?
Yes. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you very much for, uh, allowing me to tell you a bit about two 10 by 12 plaques that, uh, we would like to install, one at the West Burying Ground and one at South Cemetery. Um, this will complete any plaques that we put in existing cemeteries here in town, I believe. Since we already have the one at Pan Cemetery, which I must apologize for now, apparently I did not come before the board before we put up that double plaque granite, uh, what shall I say? The signs about the Pan Cemetery. And I'm apologizing, what, 12, 15 years later? Uh, I believe that Jenny has copies of the texts of these two plaques. I did bring one of them with me. Uh, it's a little better space than this particular printout here. This is the one, and then Bolton's oldest, which of course is very interesting because the gentleman who donated the land for the cemetery was the first person to be interred in that cemetery. And I do have, I don't know if you can see it. They're bronze and they're heavy and the, uh, the granite platforms will be fairly low key. They aren't going to have a lot of reveal. Hopefully they would, uh, reveal enough. So if there was a 10 inch snowstorm, they would still be on top. So the historical commission, uh, is hoping that these will meet your approval and, uh, the it's not certain whether they will be put up before the snow flies this year. It's a local, uh, firm in Lunenburg that's going to be providing the granite pedestals, which are similar to the Pan Cemetery. About six inches thick and a fairly low reveal, probably no more than a foot and a half. Uh, the regular memorial company that we dealt with in Worcester, uh, has changed hands. So uh, if you would like further update on the things as they proceed, I will be more than happy to provide them to the board.
Looks good to me, Martha, and, uh, the information on the plaques is interesting. Um, so I'm, I support it.
Yeah. Yes, I think you need to, you need to coordinate with, uh, our DPW director on this, if you have not already.
Yes, he will. What we'll probably do is before I go to, uh, Lunenburg to meet with the new staff at the memorials company, I'll show him where we would anticipate that the plaques would be positioned and he will have to approve that, obviously. Um, we have the sign there at the West Cemetery and South Cemetery. So hopefully they would be fairly close to those posts that are already installed.
Has the cemetery commission reviewed these?
No, because my understanding of the cemetery commission is it's been explained to me over the decades is that they really uh, approve more um, things to do with burials, but I'll be more than happy to meet with the cemetery and show them. We never met with the cemetery prior. We always just met with Director Brown with regard to the.
Yeah, he was on the cemetery commission. So you were, you're killing two birds with one stone.
Oh, okay. No, but I'll be more than happy to, uh, inform them about this. Uh, I mean, there's, there's no reason that they can't be informed about it.
That'd be great, Martha. We appreciate that.
Thank you. So, uh, I'll make a motion to approve the two plaques for West Cemetery and South cemetery is as proposed by, uh, the store commission, historical commission.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Bill Kossakansky.
Aye.
Keep.
Aye.
Waisaki.
Aye.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you. All right. Next up, uh, we have a discussion from the Veterans Agent. An introduction of Brian Sterns and consideration of appointment as the Veterans Agent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I would like to acknowledge the great work that, uh, uh, our soon to be former veteran, well, actually our former veterans agent, Jim Cabral did for us for several years. Uh, Jim worked very hard on behalf of the, uh, veterans of Bolton and, um, uh, he is, uh, he's, um, sad that he's not going to be able to continue as our veterans agent, but he promised that he's not going away. And if at any time he can be helpful to Brian, um, he is more than happy to do so, to be helpful. And I'm sure he would be. Uh, we are very fortunate, uh, to have Brian as a candidate. Brian is, uh, a highly qualified, highly experienced veterans agent. Uh, he's been with Hudson. Well, he's still with Hudson, uh, and would continue with, with Hudson. He's been with them for several years. Uh, Kristen Noel and I, uh, interviewed Brian. We're extremely impressed with him and, uh, I'd like to give Brian an opportunity to introduce himself to the board and, uh, do whatever, say whatever he'd like to say, but in the, by the way of introduction.
Is Brian with us?
But he'll have to, uh, unmute himself first.
There we go.
There we go.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lo, for that introduction. Uh, and yes, Jim has been a valuable asset, not only to the, the town of Bolton and Berlin, but, uh, also to the state. As we continue our work as far as, uh, uh, qualifying people that are, are in need of benefits for chapter 115 as well as VA benefits. And, uh, whether it be healthcare or, uh, compensation or burials. Uh, we work together. We've worked together for several years and, uh, he's been a, a true asset to, to, uh, um, the towns as well as, uh, the state. So I just wanted to mention that and uh, I'm, I'm really happy to be here and I'm looking forward to working with everybody in, in the town of Bolton. And I, you know, I just couldn't be happier uh, to bring some, uh, my expertise in and see what I can do for everyone. Uh, it's a great, it's a great job. Uh, it's a, it's an avocation. And it's, uh, one of them things that, uh, I, I think is a necessary uh, type of, uh, environment, uh, for our well-deserved veterans and their spouses and widows and families.
Right. No. Thank you very much for your work. We, it is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I have no questions. I think, uh, if, uh, you've, you've done your, the, the homework and the legwork on Brian and he's a, a good replacement for, uh, Mr. Cabral, I, I would, uh, wholeheartedly recommend that we appoint uh, Brian as the Veterans Agent for Bolton.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Bill Kossakansky.
Aye.
Keep.
Aye.
Waisaki.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sterns.
Pleasure to be here, Brian.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you. You too. All right. Next up on our agenda is the dangerous dog update on set for 79 Lancaster Road.
Uh, I believe Phil, I believe Phyllis is with us. Phyllis, would you please give that update?
Yes.
Yes. I had an email with Monica Danaher on Wednesday. She says the kennel has arrived at the store that they had ordered on that day, so it arrived yesterday. She said it will be picked up and set up this weekend. I will follow up this weekend to see how much was accomplished. And the training for the obedience class, she has six six dates that she goes to are done and there's four more to finish the course.
Okay. Great. So after they get it installed, you'll go over and take a look at it and we'll hear from you at a subsequent Board of Selectment meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Phyllis.
Thank you very much, Phyllis. We appreciate that. And don't go away because up next is the Dangerous Dog update for 42 Fox Run Road. Phyllis, you're on.
Okay, I got an email back from Mr. Newman today. He said the kennel was installed. He has paid and signed for the liability insurance. The writing. He's waiting on the underwriter to send the binder. He said his dog does have a microchip, but he didn't know, couldn't confirm the number, so he's going to verify that with veterinarian. I asked him to have the veterinarian put it on their letterhead saying that it was for that dog Thudley and what the microchip number was and to email that letter back to me when he was finished.
Okay, great. And Mr. Low, do you have an update on the September 30th, 2021 hearing we attended?
I do. The hearing was before the Clerk Magistrate in Clinton District Court. In attendance were Mr. Wysocki, Phyllis, our attorney Jessica Murphy and myself. And Mr. Newman represented himself. After some discussion regarding the fencing requirements or the pen requirements, we, I think we pretty much came to closure on that, which is evidenced by Phyllis's report. The Clerk Magistrate scheduled the follow-up hearing for October 28th, but said that if Mr. Newman had complied with the order to the town's satisfaction, our attorney could notify the court and then the hearing would be canceled. So once Phyllis goes out and checks everything out, if it, if it meets the criteria that was discussed and and the selectman's order, then we'll inform Jessica Murphy to notice the court that the hearing can be canceled and that Mr. Newman is in compliance. We're certainly encouraged by the activity and certainly hope that everything meets the criteria that were established. The only other thing that came up in court was Mr. Newman asked the magistrate to consider removing the dangerous dog designation to the dog and the Clerk Magistrate declined to do so, so the designation remains.
Okay.
Don, I just have one question. So I thought there were two pieces that they had, that Mr. Newman needed to work on the perimeter fence as well as kind of the sheltered, caged area?
Or is it? The way the magistrate explained it to Mr. Newman, it was an either or. And he would, he would either do the fencing as the selectman ordered or within that fenced-in area, there could be a kennel or a pen that would meet the statutory requirements.
So when? Sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I believe, I mean, I've not seen what Mr. Newman has done for that matter, neither has Phyllis, but it's, it sounds as though what he's done should meet those statutory requirements, which is a run with a, you know, with a roof of some sort and the flooring and, and all that.
So when the dog is out, it will be in this new structure, not in the fenced, the existing fenced backyard?
It would be in the new structure, which my understanding is within the fenced-in area of the backyard.
Okay, great.
And then off property, leashed and muzzled.
Great. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much, Don and Phyllis. We appreciate the updates. Next up is 58 Main Street update, Goodleaf Holdings. An update on the community outreach meeting that was held just a short while ago. Do we have a representative from Goodleaf Holdings?
Mr. James is here.
Yes, James, how are you?
I am well, Chairman. How are you?
Very good, thank you. Very good.
Good, good. Likewise. So we, we had a meeting. Don was kind enough to come by at the start of the meeting and just make sure we were all set up. And there was a fairly small turnout, I would say, of about 11 people. We thought there might be more, but most of the rest of the people there were either our experts or our team. We had a good and healthy give and take. They expressed four main concerns, I think. They expressed concerns about property values. They expressed, and I'll go through each one of these in a second, in a little more detail. They expressed concerns about water use. And they expressed some concerns about odor and about noise. I think they were fairly comfortable with what we had to say about traffic. I think when we left the meeting, of the people that were there, you know, I'm not sure how many were satisfied by what they heard about property values and water use and noise and odor. But, but I think we did our best to be fully discursive and answer any questions we could. As we tick through these four main issues, you know, there's not a lot of data on property values. The data that there is skews slightly positive. And I can go into the reasons why, but it's mostly about dispensaries. There's almost nothing about cultivation centers. So it's really not that useful and it probably wouldn't satisfy the townspeople that are concerned about it. So. So. But, but the overview of it is that, that, is that it's it is slightly positive, but again, it's mostly about dispensaries. And it's also anecdotal. There's no like big, accurate study out there that I could find at least. And I spent several days looking for this stuff, actually, on the heels of the Butters meeting. The factors that make it, tend to make it more slightly positive are the fact that that it brings in revenue to the town, which is good for the town and good for the, good for the property values in the town because the town can the town has, has more revenue to spend on things that the residents need. There's no uptick in crime associated with it. It does bring employees into the town who tend to spend money in the local businesses. There will be an effort to hire from the town and that quite frequently happens with some of the positions. And so there was some data that said homes went up in value, but again, a lot of it was around dispensaries, not around cultivation centers. In terms of water, I think we had a pretty good and healthy discussion. I think we've come across some information on, is it Century Mills? Anyway, there's a development going into Bolton, I think of 71 households. And they use 36,000 gallons a day. And that's just for domestic use. It's 71 units. And we're going to use 1/20 of that. So 1/20 of 71 units is, you know, like three and a half households. And, and so so we think we're a pretty small user of, of, of water. And then in terms of the odor control, we have you know, we've hired the best mechanical engineers and in terms of, actually, in terms of noise control, we've hired the best noise, noise, noise consultants, both. And the mechanical engineers have designed a four-step system to handle the the odor, which we've all talked about, but I'll run through what those four systems are very briefly. I don't have his expertise, so I can't go into a lot of detail about them. But, but you know, the whole building is going to be under a negative pressure system so that when doors open, the pressure pulls things inwards. Every room where there's growing will have its own HVAC system that cleans the air and diffuses it, its smell 30 times 30 times a minute. And then there's going to be carbon filters before any air is expunged. And there will also be a technology by Fogco, which uses biologics to completely neutralize the odor. And then in terms of the noise control, we have planned on you know, the noisiest parts of it are the HVAC system and, and things like that. And we've, we've got a, you know, we've, we've, the main charge of the engineers is to control that noise along with a noise consultant. So the noise consultant is a guy from named Andy from Ascentec. And I, I know somebody who is in the very, very high-end audio business. And Andy is the man in the country on this stuff, apparently according to this guy Walter Clay. So I think we've done whatever we can to to take, to take care of the, 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 the residence concerns. And, and I believe we will have a site that is fairly clean. But, you know, I'm not sure that of the people that were there, I'm not sure that, you know, I don't think they came away satisfied. And I'm not sure they will come away satisfied from what I have to say, even if I have more to say tonight. So that's a, that's sort of a review of how I thought the evening went and you know, I've done the best I can to characterize it as, hopefully I haven't characterized it in any inaccurate way.
Thank you, Ben. We appreciate that.
Sure.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
No, I'm fine.
No, I'm fine. Thank you for reviewing that first.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm fine. And I know you had a meeting and you have, you've given your commentary and I, you know, we've had these meetings and discussing how you're planning on mitigating these particular issues, so I don't have any additional questions or, or concerns.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank, thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Low, should we open it up for a few moments for some public comment, as long as we have some comments that relate to some, some new items as opposed to things we've heard in the past? We'll give an opportunity for the folks at home to talk a bit. So let's, let's open it up for discussion for a few moments. If we keep hearing the same comments and questions repeatedly, I will, I will stop the, the conversation. Anyone have their hand up?
Mr. Jacobson has a hand up.
Mr. Jacobson.
Hello, this is Jake Jacobson of 595 Sugar Road. I just want to make sure you hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay. So about
Well, now we, now we're having a lot of trouble hearing you.
Hear me?
You're breaking up quite a bit.
About now.
Yes, we can. All right, now we can.
Okay, I'll just make it quick. I just want to give my full support behind the project. I'm, I live within a mile of the project and I give my full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Appreciate it. Mr. Lou Verratti, Mr. Have your hand up.
How you doing?
Very good, thank you.
Um, I think my video is acting up, but I'll do my best here. Okay, there it is. So, so we attended the meeting. My first question is, I was wondering if any of the selectmen had a chance to see the outreach meeting that was presented and recorded?
I've watched some of it, but not all of it.
Okay, did any of the other members have a chance?
I also watched some of it, but not all of it.
Okay, all right. Okay, great. I didn't know if you had the opportunity to see that. So the first thing that I want to address is the the, the items that Mr. James brought up, the four value, the four items is exactly what we had discussed. The value of the homes, I think we've talked about that in the past. I won't bring that up. The issue for smell, if you saw in the meeting that Andy, who was really, you know, I enjoyed his conversation, but the long and short of it is, is that when we finally were able to get him to answer our question as to can we go to a site and see if there's any smell of any site that he's developed, he said, no, it's private information. Okay, fine. And then we found out that the devices, the equipment that is going to be used for containing the smell has never been built before. So they're going to be using a brand-new system to try to contain the smell. So this is not a proven product. It's not a, it's, it's completely new. And then we asked, well, what happens if the smell does occur? And the, and the answer was, well, we'll try to fix it. We'll work on it. You know, we'll see what we can do about it. So that wasn't very reassuring, wasn't really a great answer for the folks in our town. Then we pressed them about the water consumption. So they said they'll be using 6,000 gallons a day, which is an incredible amount of water in my mind. Our wells are pretty well depleted and adding this into the mix is you know, there's a good possibility that we're going to be running out of water. And then when we asked what happens when we run out of water, the answer was, well, by law, we can do whatever we want. We can drill as deep as we want. We can use as much water as we want. And if you folks run out of water, well, we're sorry, but that's, that's really on you. That's your expense. That's your dime. That's your problem. That's not our problem. Again, they kept saying by law, legally, they can do whatever they want. And that wasn't very reassuring to us. The issue on noise is that they're going to be building brand-new I can't think of it, towers, refrigeration towers. And there's someone in our street who is very, very familiar with these devices, these enormous pieces of equipment. And he says they produce an incredible amount of noise. And he sees there's no way that you're going to be able to contain the noise on these enormous systems that they plan on putting in. Again, what are you going to do? That's not our problem. As long as we don't go over 10 decimals. And we said, well, we can hear people doing lawn work on the facility. So we're pretty sure we're going to be hearing the equipment that you're going to be putting in. By law, we can do whatever we want. You know, we're sorry if that affects you, but you know, that's, that's really on you. So there's really not a lot of neighborly coexisting going on here. It's more by law, we can do whatever we want, when we want, and that's on you. Then I, then I asked if there's, I'm not finished. And then there was a question about fees and fines. So what happens when they do use up all our water? What happens? Do they get fined? What happens if there's smell? Are there fines? What happens if there's an incredible amount of noise? Will there be fines? How do we prevent them from doing these issues? Because my understanding is that the fines are very minimal and it would be a bump on the log basically for them to pay the fines and continue on using up the water, using up the, the, you know, creating an incredible amount of noise and producing smell. So they don't So they don't have any solutions for the noise issue. They don't have any issues for the water issue. And they don't have any solutions for the smell issue because they've never built whatever they're developing. So they can say that they're going to be treating whatever they want, but it's not a proven product. And they're creating it on the fly and we're the guinea pig that they're going to be using it on. So um, yeah, there was a lot of resistance in the meeting. Um, definitely not a lot of goodwill that was built up between us and uh Mr. James. Um, so I think that's new information that you folks probably didn't hear in the meeting. And I definitely wanted to bring it up to light, and my my thing to you folks is. What happens when all these things go awry and what happens when all good promises aren't met? Thank you.
Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to speak to some of those issues. So first of all, we never said it's tough luck and it's your problem. We never said that. We said. Uh, very different things than that, number one. Number two, the uh. The odor equipment has been tested in other uh applications and it's not brand new. Uh, it is um, it is brand new to the. To this application. It is brand new to this application. And uh, it's being installed in four different locations by uh by this individual Eric Gath. Who's our uh mechanical engineer, and he is highly confident that it that it will work. Um, and uh, and there's a tremendous amount of money spending on it, being spent on it upfront. Which I would assume would create some goodwill, but it doesn't seem to be appreciated at all by uh. By uh some of the people. So uh, we're we're doing. We're spending millions and millions of dollars to address these four issues. And there are many, many plants where the sound control has been controlled. The sound controls that we're planning on using without any implications. And as I said, the water is not six thousand gallons a day. That's the gross. That's the most it would ever be. It's more likely to average eighteen hundred gallons a day, and that is the equivalent of three households, three and a half households that this development. So I don't really think we're going to be using a lot of water. There's a lot of other uh businesses and organizations in the town. That use a lot more water than we would be using. So um. So uh, and then in terms of the noise, ten decibels is very little, and we either. Meet it or we get shut down, and that is what we said in the meeting. So uh, so those are my responses to what was just said. I don't want to get in a long and and hard argument, but I I just didn't feel it was quite as balanced. Uh, a review of the meeting as it could have been.
Um, well, I'd like to respond to that. So um. No, your your mechanical engineer said that it would, it's never been built. That those were his words. You also are quoting eight, was it four hundred and forty gallons per household? That's for eight people in a house. That's not true. You keep bringing up the statistic, which is inaccurate, which also throws up red flags for the rest of us. When you use an inaccurate data to prove your point.
Mr. Verratti, you you have you have made your comments. Mr. James has responded. There are other people who would like to like to speak. We do not have an infinite amount of time this evening, so thank you very much. Uh, David, uh, you've had your hand up for a while now. Uh, would you like to make a comment, please? And and it it needs to be something new and original, please.
Well, the first thing I'd like to to state is I'll echo a lot of the the statements that Lou said. I think he he stated. A lot of the viewpoints that the residents here along Bolton Woods Way uh share. So I I'm not going to add too much more to it. I did want to state that I didn't really appreciate being characterized by Mr. James. Is essentially a disgruntled resident. You know, I I I understand that it's a business is trying to come in and you'll provide some degree of. You know, maybe a positive benefit to the 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 community. And I, we all want a positive benefit, net benefit to the community, but this is our neighborhood. We care about the street that we live on. And the environment that we live on, it's it's where we chose to live. You know, we came here to Bolton to live. Mister James doesn't live in this neighborhood. You know, we we want to be good neighbors. I just want to say that. It 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 just is not right to be characterized as someone that we don't seem to get along. You know, we want to be the 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 bad wheel, the bad cog and all this. This is our neighborhood. We live here. We care about the water. You need water to survive. You know, I, everyone can appreciate that they want to be able to turn on their tap and ensure that there's good, clean water coming out. As far as like border control, you know, I've never seen or heard of any circumstance of any. Cannabis cultivation facility in the country, possibly the world. That does not permit any kind of order whatsoever, but clearly state what the Bolton bylaw says. Section two fifty dash twenty-three dot three clearly states. All marijuana establishments shall be ventilated in such a manner that no odor from marijuana. Cannot be detected by a person with a normal sense of smell at the exterior of the marijuana established. Establishment or at any adjoining use of property. That doesn't mean. You know, at one AM in the morning on every Monday or every Tuesday or whatever. It's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three sixty-five. That's what that, that's the way I interpret that bylaw. It clearly states that. The way that they're making it sound like with this system to mitigate odor. That would be in violation of it unless it meets that at all times. Can they guarantee that?
And it's untested.
This is an untested system. I'm I'm an engineer. I I totally understand. You know, that they've, they're trying to do what they can to meet it, but I can't hear that they can guarantee it. You know, where has this been tested? Where can we go to prove that this technology works? I've read about this. I've never seen that this works.
But thank you very much, David. Appreciate it. Uh, Shannon Becker, you have your hands up.
Hi, um, I just had a question about the water. You're saying that the most you'd be using is six thousand, but you plan on using eighteen hundred. How, what system are you using? How are you getting it down to that number?
So. What what happens is the um, the water is primarily for the plants. But the plants then transpire it up into the atmosphere. And what we have is, we're gonna have, the plan would be to have growing rooms of twenty-five hundred square feet each. And each one would have its own separate HVAC system. And um, and that HVAC system will collect ninety percent of the gross water used. Um, part of that ninety percent is used uh. Used up in a reverse osmosis, so it becomes more like thirty percent, thirty percent uh is is it. Of of uh, of the of the gross need that winds up happening. So what, so the water is recycled and reused inside the building.
And can you guarantee that you would be bringing it down to that number? Or are we, you're saying you possibly could be using six thousand gallons a day?
Uh.
Every day.
Mr. James, you're on mute.
No, it's not going to be six thousand gallons every day. It's going to be more like eighteen hundred. We don't know exactly what the number is. Could be fifteen hundred. You know.
Oh, you should know how much you need for your, your growth system.
Well, we we know quite accurately what we need. We we don't know, we can tell you within, you know. Several hundred gallons a day, what it what it will probably need. The uh, you know, we have to start the system. The reason why it's six thousand at the beginning is because we have to start the system, but once the system is started, then it starts to recycle. So uh, and as and as I said, there's, um, we're treating this. With eight different rooms, each having its own HVAC system, which most people don't do in order to make sure. That the water conservation happens. And we have the best engineers in the business and they've built forty of these things, forty. So we're pretty confident that uh what they tell us is gonna happen.
Okay, how do we know they're the best engineers in the in the game here? I I just. Take your word for it, but I don't know that, like, I am worried about my wow. I am a single mom. I live here. I have my my children and I don't want to have to drill a well. I could never afford that. I would lose my home.
Uh, yeah, we uh, we really don't think that that's gonna happen. Um. Uh, we're gonna do some testing, uh, which was part of the response. It wasn't. Uh, it wasn't that uh, it wasn't that tough luck. That's your problem. That's not how we responded on any of these issues, I don't think. Um, and uh, so um, we're gonna do a lot of testing. And where there are problems, we will try and address it directly with the residents.
And would there be funds set aside if your use of the water drained wells? If our neighborhood had to do a lot of work, it, is there going to be compensation?
Um, we, we certainly want to be good neighbors. So we uh, we want to do the testing and see what happens. And if the testing, there are a number of wells that need to be um retrofitted or. Re-drilled or whatever, then we will do our best to do that.
What would the testing be on uh the wells down?
So.
Or.
So we 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 did, so what what we what we talked about in the in the public notice meeting and with the selectman. Was that we would be running the test at a hundred and thirty percent of what we plan to use. On uh, on our, uh, uh, on the site, we would, we would, we would be using. Uh, for a a full twenty-four hour period. So we would be sure that uh, that it would have an impact above what we, above. What we would be operating at, and at the same time, we would measure the wells of the the abutters and see what happened. And where there were problems, we would, we would work with the specific individuals to try and address that.
So you're gonna tap, monitor all our wells up here to see if they.
If people, if people, if people want some wells, then maybe what we'll do is we'll test a sampling of them. Um, and again, I want to put this in into perspective. Um, what I said earlier about the households was that the. The uh, the rules, the um. The regulations for the households for a family of fours, four hundred and forty gallons. I I didn't say that that's what they use. I, what we said was that those were the regulations for. Uh, a family of four household, and those are the regulations for a family of four. I I never quoted anything about eight or anything like that, never did that. Um, but keep in mind that that is the equivalent of three and a half old. Households for regulatory concern, and this Century Mills project has seventy-one households going into it. And I think in one month, they used a million gallons. The the, the international uses over a hundred thousand gallons a day. We're talking eighteen hundred. Not a hundred thousand.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. I I think I think the the discussion on wells. Uh, we we've, we've, we've heard the concerns, but also uh. The fact that the amount of consumption based upon uh verifiable information from other developments. Is roughly three and a half or so households. So if you raise that property and put three homes. That's the amount of water, roughly that amount of water that's being used. So I I think we 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 cer- certainly understand the the concern. Uh, and uh, I I believe that Mr. James and his operation are going to be good neighbors about this. And are are certainly heightened to the concern about that. But it's not as if we are, they're going to be using millions of gallons of water a day, far from that. So I think uh, unless someone has something of a new nature to speak about. I think we possibly need to conclude this portion of the conversation this evening and move on to the next agenda item.
If I may say one last thing, uh. Mister, I hope I pr- pronounce this right. Mister Burgspaken, perhaps? Do do I have that right? Is that the right pronunciation?
No, it's similar, yeah.
Okay, sorry if I got it wrong. Um, I didn't mean to uh paint you as disgruntled. All I said was you were unsatisfied by our answers. I I I didn't, I didn't mean to imply that you were difficult or anything like that. I just, it was, I think it was. You just, you you weren't satisfied by the answers, and I I didn't want to say that you were satisfied by them, because you weren't. So I was just trying to be direct. That's all I was trying to do. That's it. I I didn't, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to imply anything. I, and if I did, I apologize.
All right. Well, well, thank you very much. I think we're gonna conclude this portion of the of the program now.
Um, so no, I actually have a question I need for you guys to answer, please. I live on the, I live on Bolton Woods Way, and I have a question for the selectmen. My question is, to what extent are we able to request certain language be built into? The HCA agreement to protect us in the event that, you know, something happens that we're not um happy with. As far as the sound, smell, pollution, water usage to, et cetera. To what extent are we able to suggest language for the HCA agreement? I just am unclear on how that process works, and I want to make sure I don't miss it.
Mr. Low, can you comment on that, please?
Um, I think that um, that the concerns have been made very clear. Uh, certainly. The business, any business has to meet the uh statutory requirements of the bylaw. We can certainly reiterate within the host community agreement that, for example, noise can't exceed ten decibels. Um, I don't know what the proper measurement or proper wording would be for odor. But certainly between our attorney and I would be able to sort something out. Um, so we can, we can put specific requirements into the HCA to address that.
Okay, I guess my question is like, what is the, like, what do they, what then happens if they go over that? Do you know what I'm saying? What is our, like, what can we get from that? Do you know what I'm saying? Is it, it's just a three hundred dollar a day um fine? Or or like, are we able to build in terms that say like, okay, if our well does run dry, there will be like. Something, you know, that the business will have some sort of like ownership over that issue and help us to pay for that. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, I'm just wondering to what extent there will be some help on the other end if we run into an issue.
Well, depending on the offense, I mean, there's not a one answer for all of that. You know, depending on the offense, as Mr. James correctly said, the business can be shut down. Uh, either temporarily or permanently until uh something is remediated. And uh, I think one point that needs to uh be stated that hasn't been stated yet. Is that this, this water consumption for the um irrigation uh requires a new well. Which needs to be permitted by DEP. DEP will have their own uh criteria. If they feel that there's uh, uh, a possibility of area wells being impacted. I don't believe that DEP will uh permit it. Uh, if they do permit it and uh, and uh, there are concerns like that, I mean, that's the type of thing that uh. I would, I would have to check with DEP to see if they issue some sort of uh. You know, sanction. I I doubt they would as long as it remains within what it's permitted for. Um, so that's the type of thing I would have to look at um again with our attorney. I can't, I'm not an attorney. I don't want to pretend I am, so I can't give you a specific answer, but I can tell you that we could do. There 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 is legal language for uh each of these situations that we could add into the HCA. I just can't look you in the eye and tell you exactly what it is.
That's okay. That was that you actually just answered my question. I wanted to make sure that legal protective link, legal language would be included. So that we would have something to go by should anything arise. Hopefully, nothing does. So that we would have something to go by should anything arise, hopefully nothing does, you know. But if something does, we need to have, like, someplace to go to, to actually show that they, um, need to take responsibility for that issue. So I appreciate that.
But I, I would like to also be very honest with you. I, again, I, I, I don't know some of the legal requirements, for example. Um, let's say, a year from now, we're in a severe drought. How would one determine whether or not is this specific business that has caused a well to run dry as opposed to a general drought? So I can't als- I certainly can't guarantee you that any possible situation could be addressed either. Again, I just wanna be as honest with you as I can be.
Don, doesn't the HCA get, um, renewed every, is it every three years?
It would need to be renewed every five years, but we begin renewal after four.
Okay, so that would be, that would be a time when we would review these issues, um, before renewing it.
That's correct, Mister Keith, yes.
All right, um. We're almost starting to run over Mister.
May I make a couple of comments on the water?
By all means.
Thank you, um, you know, I, it was something I kinda dug in when this first came up. And I've, I've done my own research on it, um, a, a couple of points I wanna make here is that. I, I, when, when, when they first mentioned six thousand gallons a day, I thought they had to get a permit, they don't in order to do that. Um, and I, I think we need to recognize that they brought that up just in terms of. Uh, being informative, they weren't required to mention that at any point during their presentation. But they brought it up because they wanna be forthcoming and not be surprising anybody with anything else. The other thing I wanna bring up is, I was wondering what was the six thousand gallons a day in that neighborhood? So I went online and I looked at the number of bathrooms, uh, in every house. It, it, again, this is all online and the number of bedrooms, sorry, in every house on, on Bolton Woods Way. Because for every bedroom, you're permitted, uh, you have to have a septic capacity of a hundred ten gallons per day. And what that totals for all of Bolton Woods Way is eighty-eight hundred gallons. Uh, now that's a standard, that's a hundred ten gallons per, per bedroom is, is a standard that's been in place since nineteen seventy-eight. I don't really know how accurate it is, but you, you, on average. I'd say you have to be, as a, as a group, as a neighborhood, you have to be using at least forty-four hundred gallons per day. And it, and, and that's only interior use, that does not include any gardening, any mowing the lawn, any watering the lawn. Any exterior use at all, that's, that forty, eighty-eight hundred gallons, uh, is, is strictly interior use. So I would look at this, and I'm coming around to this point of view, is that another neighborhood, similar to Bolton Woods Way. Is being put in down by Main Street. In terms of water consumption, and that's what I'm comparing it to. And, um, you, you know, there. I, I live on the other side of town, one of my neighbors had to put in a well. You, you don't know where your water's coming from, where it's going. It, you can't just summarily blame the, 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 the factory down at the bottom of the hill if there's problems. Certainly, we don't want that, um, but I, I think we need to take a perspective on the total, uh. The total area and, and not just make a direct connection between the fact that. You know, th- they're gonna be drawing their water from multiple directions, not just from your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sikansky, uh, I'll entertain one more question, Mister Jake Jacobson, you've had your hand up.
Yeah, sir, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Okay, yeah, I just wanna say a few things, um, one is that a majority of the town voted for a business to be of, of this type to be, to be put into the town. And I don't think that that should be an issue at all. The second thing is that the peak, the folks at Bolton Woods Way chose to live where they, where they bought their home. And they knew that there was a business there and they knew that something would be going in there eventually, so. Wh- whether it's this business or another business, something's gonna be going in there and they don't seem to be happy about anything. So I would like to re- reiterate that I live a mile from the site, I'm very happy with the, the team that, that has been. Speaking about their business and, and all the things that they're doing to make it, um, successful. Um, and I also, uh, think that it's a very solid, solid business. I look forward to them joining the town and also, um, gi- giving opportunities for people to work there, you know, an opportunity to have jobs. So again, I'm a hundred percent behind this and thanks for your time.
Uh, can I ask where Mister Jacobson lives?
Five ninety-five Sugar Road, less than a mile away.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mister Jacobson, I think, uh. We'll conclude this, this, uh, portion of this evening's program on, uh, fifty-eight Main Street. Thank you, everyone, for, for, uh, asking. Mister James, thank you very much for participating this evening, we look forward to continue working with you on that. And, uh, we'll conclude this portion of the program. Next up is an update from the town administrator on negotiations on post-community agreement with Goodleaf Holdings at fifty-eight Main Street.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, uh, Attorney Brian Fock and I have had two negotiation, uh, negotiating sessions so far. With Goodleaf, uh, with Mister James and, uh, and representatives of, of his group. Uh, I, I'm very comfortable saying they've been very productive, very useful, they are ongoing. Um, so I have nothing to report at, at, at this time, but we, we've certainly made progress. And, um, and they have been very productive.
Okay, great, thank you very much, Mister Lo. And then next up, wow, Mister Lo, you have a second, second opportunity to shine this evening. This, it's the, it's the portion of the program we all look forward to as the town administrator report.
Before you start, can I just thank everybody, residents, selectmen and everybody else on the phone? Uh, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mister James.
Thank you.
Coming, have a good evening.
You too, bye.
All right, all right, Mister Lo, you're up.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, oh, first of all, I don't have numbers as of tonight relative to the COVID nineteen update. But I will tell you that as of last Thursday, um, the percentage of eligible. Residents to be vaccinated age twelve and up was up to ninety-one point eight percent. And the number of unvaccinated residents in town was at three hundred and thirteen. So we have very, uh, very strong numbers, uh, relative to pretty much any other town that I know of. Certainly in the area, we're, we're, uh, we're in very good shape. As far as grant updates goes, uh, I do have some news for tonight. Uh, and this will be news to some of you, uh, depending on which one of these things I'm talking about. Uh, technically not a grant, but, um, I did wanna let you know that, uh, under the bulletproof vest partnership. The, uh, uh, that, uh, Chief Nelson and the department works with. Uh, we were awarded two thousand twelve dollars, uh, for bulletproof vests under the program. Um, so good news there, um, also staying in the, in the police department. Um, we have been, uh, I'm happy to announce that we've received an award of nine thousand nine hundred dollars. For the FY twenty-two municipal roads grant. The funds will cover overtime costs for traffic enforcement, six mobilizations, ten four-hour shifts per mobilization. So, uh, we're always, uh, residents are always asking for more traffic enforcement. Uh, Chief Nelson went off and gave us a grant for ninety-nine hundred dollars to be able to do more of that. So congratulations, belations to Chief Nelson and the department. And last, but certainly not least, um, I wish I was saying this and, uh, if we're all together in a conference room. Uh, but, uh, the town of Bolton receives one, uh. One hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars in our latest green communities grant application. This will allow us, um, to complete six projects, it represents full funding of the grant requests. The six projects are, one, weatherization of the DPW building, two, installation of unit heaters at the DPW. Three, weatherization of the public safety building, four, weatherization of the town hall. Which means we won't have to build individual campfires in the town hall this year. Five, installation of energy efficient lighting at town hall. Six, installation of a demand controlled ventilation system at the Emerson School Gym. Uh, this effort was led by our still new town planner, Val- Valerie Ortiz. Just like everybody else on my staff, she refuses to accept a lot of congratulations on her own. Um, so I would like to read what Valerie wrote to me. She said, this is the third green communities grant Bolton has received since Yurka, Yuriarte, Erika Yuriarte. Worked to gain the town's designation in twenty eighteen. The success of this grant is due to the partnership between the Department of Public Works. Rob Frieswick at the Neshova Regional School District and the Planning Department. Staff have worked together to finalize the grant application, coordinate with consultants and provide project oversight. Um, so yes, as with any grant application, it is a team effort. No one does these things on their own, but ev- each grant application has a leader, and in this case Valerie was our leader. Uh, and I would also like to take this opportunity just to tell the board that I could not be happier than I am with Valerie's work. Uh, that she's done so far, she's fit in wonderfully in the town hall and everyone, uh, really enjoys working with her.
Great.
Thank you.
It's very good and it's, it's nice to hear that there aren't just silos of, uh, work. People are, are working across departments and, and it's, everyone's benefiting.
Everyone is benefiting and the town benefits when everyone works together and, and that's the environment that we have here, uh. Every employee, uh, works like that and I'm very proud of it.
Great.
Um, and that is all I have under my report unless anyone has any questions.
Nope, I'm good, gentlemen, any questions?
No, thanks.
Okay, well, next up is Select Board Business, does anyone have any public service announcements? Okay, not this evening, uh, next up is consideration of appointment of a representative. To serve on the Neshova Regional School Committee Regional Agreement Amendment Advisory Committee, RAAAC. Wow.
Uh, so as the board saw, this is, uh, I forwarded an email that I received from Bolton School Committee Representative, uh, Mary McCarthy. Uh, this is a task, uh, of, uh, an advisory committee. That, uh, the school district is looking to form with one representative from each of the three communities. Uh, it, uh, it could be a member of the select board, uh, if there are no members of the board who are interested. Uh, they would seek a, a member of the advisory committee, uh, but the, the select board gets first crack at it, so. Um, I promise to have this on the agenda for tonight.
Great.
What, what does this advisory committee do?
It, it is to review the regional, the district regional agreement and, uh, make recommendations for changes.
It's just very curious how the committee hasn't been formed yet, but there's been a meeting schedule already determined. So I need to understand that a little better.
Yeah.
I- is it just me?
I'm sure it's in anticipation of people filling the roles.
Okay.
Well, any of you gentlemen interested in, uh, serving on this committee?
I'm not.
Um, I would not be prepared to make a decision one way or the other this evening. Uh, I would, I would, I would pass it along to advisory and if there's, there's nobody there, then, you know. I'll ask Don to bounce it back to me and after I've given it due consideration, I'll make a decision.
Mister Lo, well, i- in, in light of Mister Sikansky's comments, uh, wh- when is the first meeting of this? Uh, advisory committee scheduled for?
Uh, I'm afraid I'll have to defer to Mister Sikansky because he's seen a date that I haven't seen yet, so I'll have to ask him.
Proposed meeting dates are Wednesday, ten twenty-seven, November tenth, Tuesday. Um, are, um, um, November thirtieth, uh, December eighth, January first. And January nineteenth from seven PM to eight fifteen.
Well, to, to, to be honest, I'm sure they've tried to lay out a schedule, so they have some sort of roadmap. Um, again, in anticipation of the slots being filled.
And, and what was the first meeting? Bob?
Uh, says ten twenty-seven, is that a Wednesday?
Yes, our next, uh, yes, cuz our, our next meeting is ten twenty-eight.
Okay.
All right, so, so. So we either have to offer up somebody here before our next meeting. Or, uh, kick the bucket and, uh, let somebody at advisory take a crack at it. And if we were to have to come back to us, we would have to schedule a special meeting to discuss that, is that not correct, Mister Lo?
Well, I would suggest rather than a special meeting, you, we would have a representative at the first meeting, but there'll be many. I, I wouldn't suggest you have a special meeting for that sole purpose, but we just wouldn't have anybody at the first meeting.
Is, is it likely that the other two towns will have somebody in place by the end of this month?
Um, insufficient data, I.
Because. It's, that's where everything's baked in.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't know, I've not heard from my colleagues whether or not they're gonna have somebody in place for that meeting.
Well, I, I, I think we play it by ear and if we need to have a brief special meeting, we have a brief special meeting.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think we, you know, let's get a little more information on this and, uh, uh, I'm fine with that. Always have plenty of time in my day for another meeting.
Especially about the regional agreement.
Oh, especially about the regional agreement, we can have one to four AM, so yes, like, why, let's, let's just, uh. Uh, maybe Mister Lo, you get a little more information on what all this is about and what the other two towns are planning on doing. And then, uh, we can, we can go back through you and, and reconvene on that. How's that sound like a plan? A plan for a plan?
Yes.
Okay, great, then we will move on, uh, review license fees for constant possible vote to approve select board license fee schedule.
So you, you have to schedule, um, the only, unless I'm mistaken, and if I am, Jenny will correct me. Um, I believe the, the only new, uh. Number on, numbers on here would be for the filming license, because we've discussed, we discussed at the previous meeting. I, I committed to get, um.
Right.
comps from some area towns, which I did, and, uh, I know Jenny included those comps in the packet. After having reviewed them, uh, I'm actually glad that the board decided to wait until this meeting. Because, um, the approach that I really liked the best. Uh, was a five hundred dollar, uh, application fee for film licensing. Um, so that, that's actually where it says film licensing, it would actually get application fee. And then for any, any, uh, circumstance where the, uh, production company would be using town property in any way. It would be seven hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that does not preclude all the requisite, uh, uh, police details or fire details and so forth. So they would still need to pay for officers or firefighters to work details, that would be, uh, this would just be payable directly to the town. Um, having reviewed what other towns are doing, to me, I, I think that seems very fair.
Yep, uh, that's fine, gentlemen, do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
That's good, it's a good place to start.
All right, so I'll just.
I did have some comments, so under the, under the, uh, liquor, I'm just wondering why. Um, under like wine and malt, um, package store on premise. Um, why we're not, you know, we're at the low end pretty much related to our comps. Why we're not averaging or matching some of the higher numbers? Uh, you know, Sterling, Berlin, Lancaster, very similar towns. Um, so I'm just wondering why we're not, we're so low compared to them.
Uh, well, you could certainly do that. Um, I wasn't making a recommendation on that. Honestly, just because I was focused on the new filming fee, but that's certainly within the purview of the board. If the board would like to do that, it it certainly, certainly would be appropriate.
Well, the al- alcohol fee in in Bolton is the same as surrounding towns. Um, so we're, we're talking about the wine and malt, and it's the difference between. Twenty-five dollars at the low end and seventy-five dollars at the high end.
Uh, wine and malt. No, it's, 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 we're at eight hundred bucks and other towns are at thousand or twelve fifty.
I thought we were looking at the, the one day. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I was looking at the one day licenses.
No, I think John was talking about the package store stuff.
Okay.
So, yeah, the last three line items, wine and malt, package store, wine and malt on premises, farmer's pouring permit.
Yeah, you have the authority to adjust that to what you, what you think is reasonable.
Well, I, I would go with matching like the dominant figure for, you know, most towns, Stowe is really low. Comparatively, but Harvard, Lancaster, Burling and Sterling, so averaging theirs the highest ones or averaging, yeah. Um, I'd like to see us match at least the, you know, the average of the three highest. Rather than the lowest.
Okay, I mean, you could do it tonight if you would like to propose a figure, otherwise. Uh, we can look to make an adjustment and come back to the next meeting with that.
Why, why, why don't, why don't you take a look at, at the, the, the information that's in the packets? Because after the, the fee schedule, you did some comps of the towns.
Yeah.
And maybe do some averaging and uh, see where, you know, like, like for Walt, uh, wine and malt. Um, on premises, we're eight hundred, Harvard's at seventeen fifty, Lancaster's at two grand, Berlin's at twelve hundred. And even though wine and malt, one day liquor license stuff, we're twenty-five and fifty, you know, other towns are either fifty and fifty or seventy. So why don't you come back and do some averaging and come back with some, some numbers?
Okay, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, and I'd, I'd be, I'd be okay going with, on the high end for those things. I mean, there, there's not, there's not a lot of these in town, so it's not gonna make a major difference.
Right, right.
So what I, what I would ask for a vote on tonight, though, because we're going to have a, uh, an opportunity next week. Is, as fate would have it, a filming company is coming to town. And I would like to be able to implement this fee as of next week, which would require a vote of the board tonight to approve that.
All right, then how about, how about we, we'll, we'll take a vote, uh, take a motion for a vote for the uh. Uh, out of the fee schedule to carve out the filming license fee of five hundred bucks and the commercial filming on town property. At seventy-five, seven, seven hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Uh, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry, Sikansky?
Aye.
Waisaki?
Aye.
Keep.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. All right, and the rest will, will, will take up at the next meeting, okay? All right, uh, next up is to approve and the bills, the, and the payroll warrants of W. Twenty-two dash seven and W twenty-two dash seven A.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call Sikansky?
Aye.
Waisaki?
Aye.
Keep.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and next up, we, I think we have some minutes.
Yes, we do. From regular session, we have. The minutes of September ninth and the minutes of September twenty-third, I've received no changes on either set. I could share them if you'd like.
I'm good.
Now I'm fine, so I move, we approve the minutes of September ninth and September twenty-third.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Roll, roll call Sikansky?
Aye.
Waisaki?
Aye.
Keep.
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey. All right, then next up is an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A. For purposes two and three to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. For the w- uh, one, Teamsters Union Local number one seventy and the Bolton Police Union Local two eighty-six. IUPA AFL-CIO, as the chair finds that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's bargaining position. Uh, to review and approve executive session minutes, and the board will not returning to open session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Okay.
Roll, roll call Sikansky?
Aye.
Waisaki?
Aye.
And keep.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for participating this evening, and we will see you at the next meeting. Thank you very much.
And I will move everyone who's remaining into the waiting room. Give me just a moment.